Welcome, everybody. I'd like to get started because the past couple of weeks, our caucuses seem to run a little late. I want to be mindful of everyone else that'll be attending the regular meetings. So welcome, everyone, to the City of Scranton's American Rescue Plan Act progressive update from Cancer Advisory. And with this is Erica Yurkovich, Christopher Hughes, Desi Navarro, Mayor Cognetti, Eileen Cipriani, and Jessica Escra. So I don't know which one of you folks want to get started, but the floor is yours.
Sure, I'll just kind of kick us off. Nice to see you all. We're excited to be here tonight to present the update to the plan. We've been talking about this for a long time, waiting for those new regs, regulations, to come out, and they finally have over the summer. It was just a few weeks ago that the new rules came live, and it could not have been more timely. One of the changes that the U.S. Treasury made was to include disaster relief in the rescue plan funding. Of course, over the summer, we thought, well, we won't need this. We'll go along as planned, and then September 9th happened. So tonight, what we'll go through is what we've rebudgeted some things to be able to, hopefully, help some of our residents with the -- to recover from the disaster and added some flexibility into some of the stormwater funds so that as we learn more from FEMA, from PEMA, from that process, we might be able to help our residents on a larger scale, those ones that were substantially affected. So we'll go through all these pieces, but again, very timely that the national regulations changed the way they did, and I thank all the teams sitting here and our advisors at Answer, being able to pivot quickly to add in the disaster pieces into what you have before you.
Awesome. Good. So thank you for that introduction. Do we want to pass out the hard copies of the presentation?
Yeah.
That way you guys have what we're going to review on the screen here.
Thank you.
So again, I'm Desi Navarro with Answer Advisory. I normally have a partner with me. He actually just had a baby on Friday, so it's just me today. But we're going to take you guys through our agenda. We're going to start first with our objective statement, just like we do with every update. Then we're going to talk about what Mayor Cognetti had just mentioned here, the interim final rule 2023. So this is hot off the press, just was released in August. Three significant new categories were added, so we're going to talk to you guys through that. Then we're going to go through some allocation plan updates and some proposed reallocations to go along with that. Then we'll give you some general updates on progress to date. We'll finish with the dashboard update and then obviously open up for any questions. So our objective statement for tonight is really three parts. The first is to provide a summary of the interim final rule 2023. So last time we were here in April, we had mentioned ARPA-FLEX. If you guys recall that name, that's what kind of the NACO and the different institutions were calling these three new categories before they were published back when this became a topic in December. Since then, now it's now coined the interim final rule 2023. After a 90-day comment period, it will become final rule 2023. So I'll go through more details on that here in the next slide. The second point here is we're going to provide a summary of ARPA-proposed budget reallocations. And then lastly, provide an overview of progress in implementing the ARPA spending plan, all of the $68.7 million. So interim final rule 2023, or ARPA-FLEX, now allows for broader flexibility through three new categories. The first is a disaster relief or mitigation category. The second is a surface transportation project category. And the third would be a CDBG, specifically Title I, project or program category. So a couple of high-level caveats with these three new categories. One, there is a cap. So new categories are capped at $10 million, or 30% of the overall allocation, which for the City of Scranton would be roughly $20.6 million. The deadline for expenditures for surface transportation and the Title I projects, if the city were to elect to pursue those, was actually bumped up to September 30th of 2026. The obligation deadline of having everything under legal contract by December 31st of 2024 still exists and still remains for the previous categories as well as for these three new categories. And lastly, all of these projects must still comply with II CFR 200 requirements as well as the quarterly reporting requirements. So a couple of details here, starting with the disaster relief mitigation. So this category provides relief through a few different mechanisms here. One would be to cover costs associated with -- well, let me back up. First, there has to be a declared emergency. That's one of the key factors here. So that can be either at the national level, at a county level, it can also be at the city level, if that goes through the formal process, which sounds like you guys had a pretty nasty bout here several weeks back, have gone through that process. So that's key one, to being able to dip into that category or use funds there. Once you're able to prove that and show that, you can use this category to cover costs like debris removal, public infrastructure repair, increased operational costs, cash assistance for low-income households, or uninsured or underinsured impacted individuals, things like that. You can also use it for future mitigation measures as well. So if you wanted to try and future-proof, flood-proof, things like that, there's allowability to go ahead and do that. Category number two is a little more complicated. They've broken it up into three different pathways here. The first pathway for these surface transportation projects would be to go ahead and fund by either expanding the existing scope or covering unforeseen costs for a project that's already received U.S. DOT funding. The caveat to that is what they don't allow is because the ARPA-FLEX rules or the interim final rule is a little more lenient than what a DOT grant program may be. They don't allow you to de-obligate a project that's already got DOT funding obligated towards it to then use all of ARPA dollars. Instead, what you can do is supplement, not supplant, those costs to, again, cover those unforeseen's or expand scope. That pathway number one does require preapproval from the DOT as well as Treasury before you use funds in that manner. Pathway number two is what they call the streamlined pathway. There's criteria through the RAISE grant program as well as Title 23 that defines eligible surface transportation projects, roadways, highways, bridges, the rehab, you know, those types of activities. As long as the city can do an eligibility review against those eligible activities in the RAISE grant and Title 23 and confirm that there's not a significant environmental impact to doing one of these roadway or surface transportation projects, for instance, if it's simply replacing what's already there as opposed to, you know, creating a new roadway that may have significant environmental impacts. If it's easy and it doesn't have that impact, there's no preapproval process that's required, and it just expands the eligibility of what you can do for some of those road paving, sidewalk, bridge repair-type projects. Pathway number three is more of a -- if a project had been funded in the past through different funding mechanisms, TFIAs, mega grants, infra grants, things like that, if you want to cover the non-federal match portion of any of those grants, there's now the ability to do that under pathway three. That pathway, though, does require the city or would require the recipient to consult with the DOT before using the funds in that manner. So pathways one and three require some kind of preapproval or consultation with the DOT. Pathway two, that streamlined pathway, does not, and it's the kind of the easiest way to go there. And then finally, that category number three is exactly what you think it would be. We know that there is a lot of CDBG program funding out there. There's still the CDBG coronavirus funding that's out there. None of those programs would be eligible to add more SLIFIRF dollars to. It's strictly those Title I projects or programs, those traditional HUD CDBG programs, that you can now expand or add additional funding to, again, within your cap limits, and you still have to operate within the cap limits that are set here for these new categories. So that's the most complex part, I think, of the presentation. So then that transitions us into now, given the fact that we've all been waiting, and we say we all, everybody on the national level has been waiting for this new final rule to drop because they know that there's a lot of assistance here and things that, obviously, a lot of cities and municipalities would like to take advantage of. So a lot of our clients are going through a very similar process where we're looking at budgets here with the interim final rule. I think for you guys as well, in light of some recent, you know, some recent impacts that you've sustained here, like the mayor said, it is very timely. So there is a proposed reallocation component to this presentation here. So on the left side, you'll see the original budget allocation of the $68.7 million. That donut, that wheel should look very familiar. That's been the donut and the wheel since the start of the program. You can see how it's broken down into the different categories and the percentages there, the majority being allocated to stormwater, followed shortly by the streets and business corridor improvements. And then on the right-hand side, you'll see some proposed revised budget allocations. So you'll see that that donut wheel breaks up a little bit differently here, where at the top as well, you'll see a proposal for a new disaster relief category at about 4% that's being added to the program as well, or proposed to be added to the program. It's important to note that a lot of -- that all of these reallocations, one, come from the new information that's obviously been published, the new events as well, but also just repurposing some of the existing budgets that you guys have had and have been working with over the last couple of years and looking at how community members, residents are subscribing to those programs and how those are coming along. And if there's dollars left over in a program that may be undersubscribed versus a program that may be a little oversubscribed, taking those things into account to make sure that you guys are maximizing and getting the best value and highest use of your dollars there. So then these wheels, the top left-hand corner, that wheel should look very familiar as well. That's the original budget allocation of the notices of funding availability. So of your $68.7 million, about $14 million of that were going to be these community or are these community-facing grant opportunities, things like public health and education grants, housing grants, economic recovery grants. And now there's the potential as well for a disaster relief grant to be added to this program as well. So originally, in that top left-hand corner, you'll see that the economic recovery category was the lion's share there at about 5.8, followed by housing and then public health and education. And now on the bottom left-hand corner, you'll see a little part of that wheel is being carved out now for disaster relief as well as a proposal. A couple of things to note, in the public health education category, based on, again, some programs being undersubscribed and some being oversubscribed, in looking at those budgets of those undersubscribed programs and figuring out how to repurpose some dollars, there's the ability to add three new programs in that public health category while still maintaining everything that you guys had initially set out to do under wellness, behavioral health, mental health, drug prevention, affordable childcare, et cetera. These programs are a new pre-K education program, some childcare individual reimbursements, and childcare service provider wage boosts as well. So we know that childcare is a big deal here for the city and for city residents, and so making that affordable and giving folks that opportunity seems to be, you know, a very popular notion here. The housing program, that bucket, those programs all really stay the same. What's really kind of materialized over the last few months is knowing that it seems like the lead abatement of housing is where the focus really, really needs to be, the ACM abatement less so. So really focusing on that component of the housing while still running with the rehab and the weatherization programs, the homebuyer programs, which are going very well with the subrecipients the city has selected, and NeighborWorks and ACE to help run those. Then under economic recovery, against the same programs that you all had started with in terms of supporting the small businesses and the nonprofits, as well as the NEPA Thrives Initiative, the Living Outdoor Alley, you know, things like that, but now also being able to carve out under the business programs, a small business technology grant program specific to allowing folks to apply for those software or hardware pieces that would really help, or any kind of marketing or internet material that might help draw more attention to folks' small business to get those business numbers back up. Please do.
So and then also under the nonprofit grants, so we've had lots of conversations with our arts community in the last year or so, and also working with Answer and understanding more and more, as everyone across the country has been feeling this out, that the grants that we initially offered were tough for some of our smaller nonprofits, namely many of the arts organizations, to access, that they're smaller organizations. It was tough for them to get to the level of documentation and things that we were looking for. So we're working with Answer to craft this updated budget. The grants that will be available will be, hopefully, easier for some of those arts organizations to be able to apply for. We know that we -- they still are recovering, the arts really, their recovery has lagged many other industries in this pandemic situation. So we're being specific and deliberate about making sure that those organizations can access these updated grants.
Desi, I have a quick question since --
Sure.
-- before we get past the wheels here. So the first set of wheels, you know, we have the original and then the proposed. Stormwater was at 34%, and then the second one is 26. So is 4% of that going into disaster relief, or -- and there's two remaining? Like, could you explain to me where -- how the dispersment got, or redispersment from this wheel to that wheel?
Absolutely. And actually, you stole my thunder because this next slide does that for you.
Oh, I didn't mean to do that, but we had enough thunder and rain.
Yeah, it's good. So to answer the question at hand here, this is a summary of how funds transferred or proposed to be transferred within categories and to which projects within those categories. So starting at the top, you'll see that public health, it's really an internal category transfer. So again, this is really from those undersubscribed or oversubscribed programs being able to balance the dollars there. But within public health, the money is still staying within that category. If you follow under the negative economic impact category, that's where it becomes a little more complicated, right? So top line of negative economic impact, there's about 3.3 that would be an internal category transfer, so it's not going to move outside of the negative economic impact category. In addition to that, there's $3 million as well that is being proposed to fund the Weston Pool, which is located in the QCT area, which would also fall within that category. We've simply broken it out, so it's a negative economic impact to a negative economic impact. But we've broken it out because it's a large project so that everybody can see and know where those dollars came from. Following that down, you'll see there's $11.6 million, and this looks like a big move of funds, but it's actually in an effort to help the city with broader flexibility for streetscapes and sidewalk projects. So when we initially started with streetscapes and sidewalks in the negative economic impact category, that's that streets, business, and corridors, green part of the wheel, the key requirement for those by Treasury was they have to be relocated in a QCT area, disproportionately impacted zone. Having them in the surface transportation area allows for some of those projects like that may have some corridors that actually reside halfway between a QCT and a non-QCT area, like the roadway actually splits some of those tracks, to be able to do both sides of the road without having to leave one side of the road unfinished. So it's really moving that from negative economic impact to surface transportation to miss any of those compliance or eligibility requirements and just be able to tackle the whole roadway strip and not have to parse it out. So same projects, same initiatives, but that's why those dollars moved to that category.
Before we move on from there, I think the last time Ms. Cipriani was here, we talked about Providence Corners, and I think this was one of these strips, and I think that was taken off of the Street Scapes Project. Is that correct now, or are we moving that back on?
So we can move it back on, Councilman, but what we've done is, when you look at the budget as a whole, we've moved all of the surface transportation into a bigger pot because we have not bid these out, and given the way bidding has gone, I'm not sure we'll have enough dollars to make it through all these projects. So what we're trying to do is, as we bid them out, because we don't have design on the Providence piece at this point, but we have design on many of the other pieces. So we're trying to accomplish those first, and then we'll move on to see what else we could do.
Also, before we move on, an email came out that had this included in it, but it had the reallocations. Who sent that email? I'm trying to find that, and I can't find the specific email. I don't know if it came through.
That had all of them?
It had all of them. Like, this only has so many.
Was that part of the legislation? Yes.
It's part of legislation.
I think it was in the cover letter of the legislation.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll keep rolling through here. Next, under negative economic impact, you'll see about half a million is being proposed to move to that disaster relief category. And then lastly, there was, you guys have a $10 million cap for revenue loss that you can spend up to. You guys were under that by about $17,000 in the last budget, so this proposal is to reallocate that $17,000 to get you to your cap under revenue loss, which allows you to fund a portion, a very small portion of the NAOG pool. I'll get to the bigger portion of it here in a second when we get to the next category. But that $17,685 will take you up to your $10 million revenue loss cap. Then under infrastructure, specifically the stormwater component, so the big 34%, you know, the blue wheel, about $2 million of that is being proposed to move to that disaster relief mitigation category. The infrastructure connectivity piece, so we'd started with a budget of about $3.2 million there. After doing a lot of reviews and with a little bit of assistance from our technical consultant about, you know, a market study of who's actually interested in bringing broadband to the city, you know, it's sounding very promising for you guys, a lot of competition, and a lot of these folks, it sounds like they may be able to bring their own capital to the table. So there's a proposal here to move about $2 million of that budget to the negative economic impact category specifically for the Connell Pool project, which again is also located in a QCT area. So those are where you see jumps, you know, major jumps between categories. And then the last one, the revenue loss category is just an internal transfer within that category of about $5 million worth, and that's the primary use of that would be to fund NAOG pool. Any other questions about those proposals? Yeah, please.
So on the revenue loss piece, the chunk that goes over for the pool, remember, in the 2022 and 2022 budgets, we have held revenue loss as a revenue item for essentially the original purpose of this entire bill was to help cities, states, and counties plan for and be able to know that the funding will be there, their revenue will be there in case the pandemic drops their tax revenue to the point that they're not able to, you know, fund their police, fund their fire, keep the lights on. So that was the original purpose of all of this, right? So that revenue loss portion, for us, and many cities have had to spend all of their $10 million on actual revenue loss, we're still tracking, and you know, as we go into the budget season here, we're still tracking very well with our revenue, so we don't think that we need that category anymore in our general operating budget. We feel confident that we can pull out that revenue source and then reallocate those dollars that we have not had to spend to the NAOG pool, which, as you all know, is not in the QCT. We can't use the rest of the $59 million for it. We have to use revenue loss. We think we've come through this uncertain time in terms of our revenue streams and that we can take that one-time revenue source out of the general operating budget and spend it now. We haven't had to spend it in the 2022 and 2023 budgets. We're going to take it out of the general operating budget and put it toward the pool now.
So also going back to those streetscapes. Now that I'm looking at the more intricate breakdown, we still have the Cedar Avenue piece on there, we still have the North Main Avenue and West Granton piece on there, North Washington downtown, Adams Ave. downtown, Wyoming Avenue downtown, Pittston and Southside. I see that Providence Square piece has been, the $2 million that was allocated to Providence Square is going to be for Downtown Biden Street. Is that due to the QCTs, or what's the reasoning for the switch over there?
So we do not believe with the level of funding we've gotten from grants downtown that we have enough funding to complete the streetscaping without pulling that piece back in. So as I said before, once we get a little bit further with engineering, we'll have a far better idea, and then we can retool. But they're in the same bucket now, so that makes it far easier for us to pivot with those.
And when it comes to the design work on those, right now, we're looking into the design work on, is it just Wyoming Avenue?
No, all of them. So Tom Riley and Associates is doing the design. So Wyoming Avenue at this moment does not have a grant attached to it, but all the Linden does, North Washington, we have two grants on Lackawanna, grant on Biden. So those all are RACPs or LSAs, or we have a portion of a multimodal on there as well. So those are under design. We're actually going to go through another counting period for PennDOT, so we're going to do another traffic count for PennDOT, then that'll be submitted to PennDOT to be able to talk to them about what we could do going forward.
Okay, but the grants are out for Wyoming, the two grants are out, or three-piece grants are out for Lackawanna Avenue.
So Lackawanna, we have two. We have applied for two more. Wyoming is out for application. Pittston is out for application right now. We have Adams, we have Linden, and Linden and North Washington is the same grant. They're to RACP.
Providence is not all QCT, right? Isn't that part of where we --
Correct. So it isn't, but with the surface transportation, it can be done now, but we hadn't designed it earlier because it was not able to be funded earlier. So that's why we didn't move forward on the design.
Do we plan on moving forward that at some point in time?
Yes, absolutely. And in conversation, well, it's not a conversation for today totally, but with new projects, we want to look at that as an area of focus that we'd like to look at.
So these last couple of slides here are going to try and summarize the progress to date. I will say that there's so much work that's being done, and this team and what Erica, Chris, Eileen, the mayor, everybody's been able to do with these programs has just been phenomenal. So we work with, and we work with a lot of clients, and this is one of the more well put-together programs here and well-run programs. So first, I'm going to hit with the progress to date on the infrastructure capital project piece, but we get to the grant programs. Please, you guys jump in and, you know, speak to some of the good work there. So as far as the major infrastructure capital projects on the list, Meadow Brook Culvert, obviously, that's complete. The electric vehicle project is complete. City paving, the initial city paving that was covered under revenue loss, this was a couple of years back, that is obviously complete. The schoolyard transformation project with TPL as the consultant leading that is in progress. It sounds like they're doing a lot of good work with that program currently, so that one's in the works. HVAC improvements in public buildings, so these are various improvements in the emergency center building, city building, kind of those public congregation settings, those are in progress. The park improvement projects are also in progress. So I think right now, a handful, and we've got Novembreno, we've got Mini Park, Connors, yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, so in addition to Novembreno, which is really, I would consider the flagship for park improvements that we've made across the city so far. In fact, as I was driving over tonight, there was about four families enjoying the park in sort of a soft opening phase before we celebrate with additional funders there. But Novembreno Park, Connors Park, the North Great and Mini Park, and then with the combination of grant funding and city funding, Oakmont Park, Robinson Park, and then finally, the future installation of playground equipment and splash pad in the former Capous Park, really starting to transform the city in the areas where it's easiest to apply these funds. I think families are going to really be able to enjoy these assets for a long time to come, and it really speaks to the spirit of applying these funds in neighborhoods where they're needed the most for economic recovery.
That's fantastic. Some city office repair projects and technology upgrades to city assets, both in progress. Working through some pre-procurement for the connectivity, which is that big initiative here to bring the broadband services, you know, throughout the city, really excited about that one. Some stormwater projects in procurement at North Granton, Manuka, and West Granton. Obviously, the East Mountain Stormwater Drainage Project, you guys maybe heard quite a bit about that, that one's currently in design as well. The City Hall roof and North Tower is out for bid award, so that's a project that'll become an eminently down the pipe, probably went next summer when weather gets a little bit nicer.
And Desi, if I could add something there?
Yeah, please.
The bids are back, we are still reviewing the bids, but with the two lowest bids in play, we will be able to actually fund the entire project with the repurposing of ARPA in this budget.
That's great. The Kaiser Valley Stormwater Project in design, and then as Eileen mentioned, the streetscape projects, all of them, marching forward with design and into permitting as well as some grant funding opportunity, or matching grant funding opportunities for And then the fun stuff. So this is the really exciting progress update, so the community grant programs. Last time we were here, we were able to report the nonprofit recovery grants and who was served there, and that had closed at this time. The public health grants are closed as well, so the subrecipients have their dollars. Let me back up. The nonprofit beneficiaries now have their dollars, and they've had their dollars to help them recover on their own or recover back to, hopefully, where they were. The public health subrecipients under wellness, substance abuse, mental health and behavioral health now have their funds, and they're in the process of running their programs and going through their reporting with the city. So every quarter, Erica's leading the process on checking in with them. They have to fill out a performance report and a financial evaluation, letting you guys know how their service and their programs are coming along and any success stories that they have every quarter. So those are fun to watch. So those are fun to watch. The childcare education assistant grant program, that one's now closed, so that again is funding in sub recipients' hands so that they can administer those programs. The homeowner, home-
Desi, if we could add on that one, the, the childcare grants have been really impactful. You know, coming from a workforce development background, that is a real impediment to workforce in the area. So we are really excited about those. And as Desi gets further down to talk about the, the wage boost for childcare workers, both of those, I think, will prove to be very good economic development drivers in the future.
Agreed. The homeowner, home buyer grants, so you know, Neighbor Works really working and taking the lead on that one, getting a lot of applications processed, same thing with the rehab and weatherization, so there are three different sub recipients that the city's working with to get those grant programs administered. So we just had to check in with them a few weeks back and things are progressing, so that, that one's also fun to watch. And then as Eileen mentioned, you know, with this proposed reallocation plan and some of the, you know, undersubscribed, oversubscribed programs, being able to look at that and identify the, the opportunity now to provide a couple of different childcare reimbursement grants. One, for individuals that are employed that may, may be struggling to find affordable childcare or in need of it because they're working, you know, eight hours a day or 40 hours a week. So this program is really there for them to apply and just provide proof of receipt of childcare service and get reimbursement for that as long as they maintain their income eligibility limits and their employment eligibility requirements. And then the child, childcare service provider wage boost program, similar to what we had done with the small business wage boost program, but this one is specifically for childcare service providers. And looking at the state of Pennsylvania averages for what a staff member makes on an hourly basis and what a manager that runs a childcare service program, what they make on an hourly basis, and trying to let folks know and let those providers know there's an opportunity now to get your employees up to that limit and hopefully allow them to retain those employees, maybe look at hiring new employees to again offer these, these services here to your residents. And then the last one would be disaster relief that would propose to open, you know, as, as early as this, as this month, you know, if everybody's on board, so. You want to zip through these real quick?
Yes.
The short version?
Yeah. So folks, with respect to everybody's time and with the acknowledgement that some of the caucuses have run over time in the last couple of weeks, we'll just, we'll kind of speedrun these a little bit here. So you've got some evidence here of our small business support programs. Originally, four and three-quarter million dollars for small business recovery and wage boost, for facade improvement grants, and for startup and expansion of small business. Startup and expansion of small businesses, I would say by and large, one of our most popular, if not the most popular grant application that we have out. You know, the ability to offer folks 25% of their project costs in order to either start or expand their, their business and what they can offer to the city of Scranton and the surrounding community, really tremendous. Just a small sample here of what you, what we can accomplish through some of this funding. The, the photos that you see here are of the Central Station Marketplace on Main Avenue in the Bull's Head section. The before and after, really striking. I know Councilman Smar was able to join us for that, that event. And just truly thankful business owners to be able to receive the support and have their business on the outside reflect how they feel about it on the inside. Moving on, the nonprofit recovery piece, these were the first grants that were officially awarded. If my memory serves, they were awarded in October of 2022, a million dollars in recovery out in the community. Obviously, not enough when you see there the total amount requested of 3.6 million, but with good faith and, and a lot of effort, a lot of time to review those applications, we're able to really put recovery where it was most needed out in the community. Moving on to the public health grants, this, the photo that you see there is from the Children's Advocacy Center, one of our largest grant recipients for public health. As Desi had mentioned earlier, public health kind of encompassed wellness, behavioral violence prevention, drug overdose prevention. So incredibly important services as folks were struggling through the pandemic with behavioral health, mental health, you know, youth violence, which I think we saw some cases of last year, really trying to address those programs in a proactive manner rather than having to be reactive to some of those issues in the community. The small business and recovery wage boost, this has been, this, this program has taken a, a lot to review. I know that some of the businesses have been waiting for some responses and we're, we're still chugging through some of those applications to make sure that we're looking at every aspect of what recovery looks like. But we're talking about using rescue funds to help folks achieve a livable wage, working for businesses in the city of Scranton. They're not going to industrial manufacturers, they're not going to warehouses, in parks outside of the city, they're working within the city, they're helping support and sustain small business. And the recovery piece there should not be overlooked. The fact that any business that wasn't able to obtain CARES Act or payroll protection funds, that they were able to come to the city and achieve up to $25,000 in recovery funds, I think is, can't be understated in any way, shape, or form. The third round of that actually just closed on Saturday, so we'll be reviewing additional applications for those as well. Excited to see what other businesses we can help recover and boost employee wages. Again, as I mentioned, small business startup and expansion, we've done three large rounds of grant opportunities for these, January, March, and July, if my memory serves correctly. 1.2 million dollars in projects to help sustain the small business economy right here in the city, whether that means, you know, opening up new lines of service for longstanding businesses or helping new businesses invest in their dream to be here in the city of Scranton and to serve our residents. Home rehab and weatherization, two tremendous partners in this program, Neighbor Works, which are handling the, more of the aging in place side of these projects, and ACE, which is handling weatherization and critical home safety repairs. Wonderful partners, we're leveraging their expertise in this area to really serve our residents, and I think the folks who are receiving these services would not have enough time before you to say enough good things about this program. Moving on, Neighbor Works, which is the city's normal partner in the first-time homebuyer program. We're helping folks achieve their dream of homeownership in the city of Scranton with grants of up to $20,000 for closing costs, for down payments, for things like that. So we're increasing homeownership in the city through rescue plan funds. And then childcare education and assistance to follow that. One and a half million dollars to expand childcare programs to make things more affordable and achievable for the folks who need childcare. And I think more importantly, or perhaps equally importantly, to address pandemic learning loss, educational programs that would help folks whose children's education suffered as a result of pandemic as being online. Educational catch-up is a critical piece of this, and these were almost equal awards across categories, about 700 and-
Well, certainly. Or 700 each.
Roughly $750,000 each for each of those programs.
Perfect, thank you, Chris. And that actually gets us to the end here, so as always, on your website, there's a dashboard update where you can go in and take a look at the, the most recent numbers there, so. Yep.
Thank you. If, if you guys have any questions on that, and then I do want to give an update on the disaster relief piece before we close, if that's all right.
Startup expansion piece?
Certainly.
To date, 61 applications have been received. When it comes to the small business, are we seeing more startups or are we seeing more expansions? Are we like-
I think in the tech space, we're certainly seeing more startups. We're seeing businesses that are subscribed to the Enterprise Center on Lackawanna Avenue. So I think what happened is some of those businesses that were established there were able to obtain an award and spoke highly about the program and the application process. I think the, the long-term impact of tech startups being here in the city of Scranton probably can't be understated. But, you know, certain projects come to mind, the Downtown Deli, which has been on the corner of Penn and Biden for many years, their ability to pursue a new catering service, for example, through this program, roughly $70,000 if, if my memory serves. So not only bringing new business, but helping those longstanding businesses gain the support they need to, to continue to serve.
Yeah, I mean, that's where I was going, you know, we have established businesses in the city that could use the help. You know, I don't know, I know I asked this to Ms. Cipriani last time, were there any parameters when we're looking at new startup businesses? Because I'd hate to see money allocated to these businesses, they, they get off their feet for a year or so and then they, they don't survive after that. So is there any parameters that we've set for those startups?
Certainly. So, you know, any investment in small business is a risk, I'm sure anybody would agree with that. But we have third-party reviews from both the Scranton Chamber of Commerce and Ben Franklin Technology Partners to make sure that the city is investing rescue plan funds wisely in the small business community. So I think the fact that it's not, any of the folks that you see at this table that are the, the end-all, be-all, I'm not a business expert, I'm a communications guy, but the fact that we have experts in the community reviewing these and looking at the financials and looking at the business plans and looking at the long-term sustainability of these small businesses, I think that's really, really important.
Are we keeping any, any data on these to track the progress and to see if, if our efforts of this allocation has panned out for the city?
Yeah, in fact, you know, the, the last year has really been spent, at least from my perspective, telling folks that we have this money, how they can obtain it, and then who's received it. I think what's most important for residents and for you folks to know is now what's happening with this funding. So if we can point to a business that was able to expand their footprint through the purchase of a food truck, for example, you know, it might not sound like a significant investment, and some people, you know, a naysayer may argue that investing in a small business to do something like that is a waste of money, but I would argue that their ability to get in front of a new customer base is worth it, and it's worth the investment, and it allows them to continue to pursue expansion. As far as, you know, if you guys need any additional reports, we can put that together.
We've contracted with Teri Ooms from the Institute for Programming, Programmatic Auditing, so it's, it's a little early for her to be able to pull that data together, but we will have that for you and be able to, to show that later on.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. So the allocation or the repurpose of the 4% for disaster relief, does, is there any reimbursement from Pima or FEMA that ties into that at all? Or this is separate, you know, moving of funds from, you know, but the proposed to the revised?
Yeah, this would be separate. So the FEMA and Pima were out last week doing their public assistance, so public infrastructure damage assessment. They're out yesterday and today looking for individuals. I see a lot of our Kaiser Valley residents are here today, a lot of them, you know, Pima and FEMA would have visited their homes and that, those areas in those last couple of days for the individual assistance. We still don't know what any federal funding may or may not look like. What we've done here is utilize, look to utilize the funding that we have already in our coffers to have flexible funding available should we not see individual assistance from the federal government, for example. The 557,000 for disaster relief, that, the intention of that is to not wait around for individual assistance from the federal level, but devise a program where we can help the residents behind me here and others across the city who are impacted. You know, it won't be, it won't be a whole house, right? But help with a boiler that somebody had to purchase, help with a deductible that somebody is having trouble meeting to, to get to their insurance. So we're, we're trying with that individual assistance, that disaster relief, that 500,000 to meet those individual needs regardless of any, of any help. Now the 2 million, we're, it's, we do need to figure out as best we can, as quickly as we can, what the federal government may or may not do. If the federal government comes in with public assistance that's going to help us with the, the creek beds and the public infrastructure, some of the pieces we were already planning to do with these funds, that would be great. But I don't want to be super optimistic there, it takes a lot to reach that disaster threshold. So we've kept that, the 2 million for disaster relief flexible so that if, if we don't get funded by the federal government, or even if we do, we can use that in a variety of potential ways. So we'll be setting up meetings, we're, we're calling through this week to the substantially impacted homes, and those folks, we're going to be having individual meetings with each household next week to tease out if they would be, if, if it's possible to do a buyout, are they interested in that buyout? They don't have to have an answer next week, but we're starting to have those conversations and trying to figure out what funds we might have available in the city already in case federal funding is either not available or would take so long that it would, you know, create a further disaster for these folks.
So just to clarify, so the new reallocation of funds that you just spoke of, and it's right in front of me here, we're not going to wait for FEMA or Pima, right?
That's, that's what we're trying to keep on the table is-
We shouldn't. Hopefully we get it, but until then, how quick are the people in front of me going to have access to these funds to help them?
And what's the process, Mayor? Or has that not been set up yet?
The what?
The, the process for this 557,000 that's been put aside for disaster relief, what will the process be for the citizens that have been impacted by this most recent flooding disaster?
Yep.
In order to access those funds?
So that's what we're working-
How quickly?
Working for in, in live time, and I think as this, as this goes through your process, we're hoping to work as quickly as possible to, to get to that. Also, this, this stack here is the different lists of damaged properties, damaged homes that code enforcement and our contractors are still working through. We're using the, the Pima list that people, that people put their damage assessment in. So we've got a variety of sources that we can use and a process that I think, I think we see with all the work that we've done with the rescue plan so far, our team is able to allocate funds pretty quickly and get funds out the door pretty quickly at this point.
So just, just to add to what the mayor said, we've already reached out to Scranton Area Foundation, they're going to serve us as the conduit. So they're working on the application process right now. We've drafted the guidance, so the guidance is, is essentially ready to go out the door. So what we'll, we'll need is the budget to pass and then we could open up that process.
So if this new repurpose of disaster relief funds isn't enough for all these people, can we repurpose more money from somewhere else to make sure that everybody gets it?
Potentially, sure. But yeah, we, we're trying to, this, this we're trying to-
I mean, 4% is 4%, but if we need more and, and these people need more, we'd like to repurpose from somewhere else.
Yeah, well, I think that's where the, this is, we're at an interesting place right now where we, we don't know, we don't have the answers, no one has the answers yet on that federal funding. So we're, we're presenting this to you at a time where we, we, no one has the full picture of what may or may not be coming. So I think, I think our thought would be to pass, pass this, and then if we want to revisit it, we could, we could certainly come back to you with another rebudget and, and do that and pull from-
With that being said, where, where are we at with the threshold? Do we know where we're at? The threshold is 23 million, correct?
Right, so it's very much a live ball with the, with every municipality and every county that's been impacted, getting, continuing to get all of their damage and really hoping to meet that threshold, but I think we need to, to set, you know, set expectations that it might, it might not meet that federal disaster threshold and that the city would then, that will be on the hook for the, the work that we've done, the work that we've already been planning to do and anything going forward.
So with that being said, it's 23 million for the county as a whole, right?
That's actually for the whole region.
Three counties.
But yeah.
And we have been in contact, we've actually reached out to Luzern County because we, you know, we're very interested in what disasters are being reported in Luzern County. So and we've gone back with our engineers, gone through our projects, we've, we spent the last few days, we've been emailing other potential areas where there could be projects in order to see if we can collectively get above that threshold.
Now, is the city collecting all of these damages or is the county collecting these damages or is it a little bit of both?
Pima will collect them. We've collected our own and submitted them, there is a, a form that they go in on.
But we've been running a, a shadow campaign to push any entities that might be able to feed into that to make sure that they've flagged that for Pima that they have damage and that that would count. Because educational institutions, for example, count toward, toward this funding and not everyone knew that. So we're trying to make sure that we can get, do everything that we can, do leave nothing on the field to get to that 23. Hopefully we can, but again, I, we're just going to set expectations that, that we might not get that.
So Clark Summit, South Abington Township, Chin-Chilla, all of them were responsible for reporting their own-
Correct.
-damages.
Yep.
And then collectively, we're hoping to hit that 23 million dollar threshold.
Right, exactly.
So recently, we've seen some Pima projects come across our desk, but they're Pima projects from 2018, correct?
Right.
If, if we hit that threshold and we make it to where we'd like to be, this money that's being reallocated, you have the 557,000 plus, so right now, you know where the 557 is most likely going? You're just unsure about the two?
That, that we're, I mean, as long as you guys want to do it, and I think you, imagine you will, that, working with the Scranton Area Foundation, that I think we do no matter what. And then the 2 million is slightly more flexible and I think we decide, we decide over the coming weeks where that, where the best use for that is.
If we hit that threshold and we're seeing some help from FEMA and Pima, will some of that money- of that money be reimbursed as it was in 2018?
Right. So things that, if we do that, that all the work that the DPW and the contractors we're working with have been doing, we would get reimbursed for all those costs of all, you know, all this, all the cleanup that we've been doing. So we desperately hope that it works, but it, that we get that funding. But I'm just, I don't want to bank on it because I don't want to set some expectation that, yeah, we can do this, 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 and this, but it might, it might be something that could be tough for the city to, to handle financially. But I, but we're, we are committed to getting the work done and working with you all to figure out, you know, what that financing might look like in case we don't get that federal funding.
Correct.
And just as a note, so the money we would get back from Pima is for debris removal, disaster recovery dollars, right? The ARPA dollars, we could actually use for mitigation. The Pima dollars that are part of this 23 million cannot be used for mitigation.
Repeat that?
So the Pima dollars, the 23 million, so for us, we have between four and $5 million worth of projects. That's for recovery. So that's for debris removal, if something was damaged, for our overtime, for all of that.
Bridges.
Bridges, that, that sort of thing that need to be repaired in the, in the immediate term. Mitigation would be something like we would hard armor channels, right? That's a different bucket. So we can't use the 23 million for that. But the ARPA mitigation dollars is another resource for us that we could possibly use for that. So that's at play. And don't forget, we have ARPA stormwater at play, and we have so many different projects in there. We've also applied for several other grants from the state that we're waiting to hear on. So unfortunately, all of these different pots of money fund different types of projects. So what we're trying to do is situate our dollars that we could fund everything, but it's a relatively complicated scenario we have.
And the way that FEMA and Pima money works is we have to spend the money and then submit it and be reimbursed for it?
Yes.
When we're looking at somebody, so on the, on the bigger breakout of reallocations, and it seems to go straight across, like each item is in correlation to the one across from it. We do have Kaiser Valley Stormwater matches of 634,000. We also have, there are two matches. One is 634,000, and the other one is 1.7 million. Is that money left over from something we've already done or completed, or is that...
Could you say that again?
So there's, there's two on here. They're both Kaiser Valley Stormwater matches. So there are matches for grants. One is 634,668, and the other one is 1.7 million, give or take. Are they, is that money that's been left over from a project, or is that money that we are actually reallocating from that project to something else?
So the one with the higher value, we did not get that grant, so it was no longer needed as a match. So that just went back into the regular pot.
Okay.
The other, the other one, the smaller grant, was a Pima grant that you opened the account for, was it last week or the week before? And that's part of the design for the Kaiser Valley.
All right. I'm going to go down that list because then there's two more. So you have the Kaiser Valley Hazard Mitigation Match, and that's a 60,000 and a 10,000. Is that something similar?
That's part of that project, too.
All right. And then we have the Kaiser Valley Community Center Stormwater. That's a $35,000 grant.
Yes. Actually, we've reached out to them a number of times. I don't know if the project is completed or not, but we haven't actually heard back from them. So I'm not really sure what the status of that project is.
I feel like that one's sitting, waiting. I think they're waiting for some money is where I think they're at with that. I see the pipes and that are in the parking lot over at Kaiser Valley.
We had asked them for information on their grant because, you know, obviously, with ARPA dollars, we need to have three bids and, you know, all of, all of that piece. So we had asked them for that, but we hadn't heard back. So we assumed that maybe they had found another avenue.
Okay. With that one, I'm just going to suggest that you get in contact with them. It's been something they've been waiting on for a long time, and it kind of goes right into play with the whole Kaiser Valley.
We were on the email chain. You know that what we offered.
I know you're on that.
They did not respond after our offer to, to help talk through the documentation that they would need to get to us. So...
Okay. So at this point, they need to talk through documentation?
I believe the ball is on that one. Yes.
Before that money gets reallocated, can we have that discussion again?
I mean, we, I can re-up the email chain when I leave here.
It is a stormwater project, so we probably don't have to undo the budget. We could just move it out of the stormwater larger pot if that 35,000 was needed.
Okay.
If I can make one other point to Councilman McCandrick's question about, you know, can, can we reallocate? Can we do this? I do want to remind the council that 2.3 million dollars in the funds, in the ARPA budget originally passed in May of 2022 was for the provision of government services. That's now been moved to Naog Pool. So I think the decision is before you. If this additional Pima, FEMA funding doesn't come through, what's, what's a more important project for your residents? Is it a pool project at Naog, or is it helping recovery for folks in North Scranton and the Kaiser Valley? It's a difficult decision. I wouldn't want to be in your shoes, but it is something to consider as to how we reallocate this budget.
So explain that one again, the provision of...
Yeah. So the, I mean, the provision of government services was, for all intents and purposes, unrestricted funding that we were able to use through revenue loss. What I'm trying to say in short is if you needed it for disaster recovery, it's there. It does not need to go into the Naog Pool project. It is there. It is revenue loss dollars. So it could be reallocated appropriately into disaster relief funds if that is the greater need of the community.
I mean, we could also say the same for the electric vehicle charging stations, a few items down. It's also the same, but it's smaller.
Those are under progress. Those are under contract.
Gotcha.
Real quick. So getting back to, I totally understand the reimbursement of Pima, usually for overtime, removal of debris, but, and not mitigation. But could it be used to either replace that Maryfield pump station? I mean, that seems to be the, two weeks ago, we had more rain, and it's, it's not working. So...
So that's in the design...
So, and I don't, I know we're in the plant, the planning has been done with the overall, the overall stormwater project, but, and then next is, no, I'm sorry, the planning and then the construction phase, it's not going to be shortly after. So I don't know what that looks like or how long it takes, but until then, let's do something with the pump station that's not working correctly. Because we can't wait for the overall master plan. It's evident that we need to fix it, or refurbish it, or get a new one, or...
So it wa, it was working on September 9th. It got inundated with water and stopped working, as happens. We fixed, we've...
Mayor, please explain, finish your explanation. Thank you.
The, then we, we dug it out and got all the mud out of there, and it was working again. It was working until, on the, was it 10 days ago? It was working. It did, a belt or something broke on it during the rain event that night. In the meantime, we've, we've gone back and repaired it again. We have added more sensors so that the, if the pump does turn on, it's going to alert the comm station and PD right away, which will be helpful. This is all obviously a Band-Aid solution to what we have already been planning, which is part of the stormwater study and plan that's in design phase, is to replace that pump house. So I...
So Mayor, you're saying that it was working until the water rose to a level where it hit the electrical box, or the...
That is what, that is what, what both of the electrical contractors we have spoken with that work on that pump station told us, yes.
Okay. Once that happened, obviously, that was it. It shut up, stopped running.
Right. The wa, you can see that the water level was higher than, than all of the, the electrical equipment in the pump.
Okay. So the fix for it is what? And it's planned, right?
The, right. It's been, it's part of, it's part of the, the GPI study that we did a couple of years ago now. We've been in the contracting and design phase, and yes, it hasn't gone as quickly as we want it to, but it is part of, replacing that is part of that plan. There's a host of, of things that need to be fixed down there. We know that. They're part of that plan. Of course, I wish that we could have fixed everything before September 9th. That's unfortunately not how these processes work, but we've, you know, we, when we came into office, we immediately identified that we needed to work on Kaiser Valley Stormwater, and that's what we've been doing. And I, you know, we want September 9th to never have happened. I don't know, even if we'd gotten everything in that plan done and more, I'm, I don't think that it would have all been, been mitigated by that. The level of water that came down was just so much that I don't think that any perfect stormwater plan with every perfectly clean basin or every, a new pump house would have, would have mitigated that.
So Mayor, a part of the fix is going to be, when the water hits a certain level, there will be an alert or something set off to contact 911?
Right.
Or DPW? How's that supposed to work?
So it's, it's called a transducer. So that'll be placed in the pump. We've, I've given the go-ahead to the contractor to put it in. So what will happen is that will trigger an alarm to the 911 center. It'll also send out a text message to the various people in the city, DPW, fire chief, et cetera, who would respond to that. IT is also setting up a camera down there so that they could have, the police desk then can see if the, the water is rising down there as well. And Councilman McCandrick, to answer your first question. So when you think of this Pima money, you have to think of it as money to set us back, to put things back in place they were September 8th, right? And that's the same thing with FEMA, because sometimes it seems crazy because you, this really needs to be fixed, but it's only to repair damage that was done due to the storm. So that's one bucket of money, and if we get to 23 million, we'll be able to do that. We'll be able to pay for all the debris removal we've done, which we're, we're in Lindy, Kaiser, in Leggins Creek, removing the debris, and Market, Market and Yard, we're putting the storm pipe underneath the road. So there's a lot of significant projects. There's road resurfacing has to be done. That, that just sets it back to the way it was September 8th. What we need to do is have different pots of money, and it just reminded me that if we're declared a disaster, so say we get, there's 23 million, Pima gets an additional 20% from the federal government, and then that's available for grant applications for mitigation. So we would apply just like Elephant, Chinchilla, Clark Summit, et cetera, would for those dollars.
Okay. So with all due respect, this, the pump house to me seems like a lemon. Okay? So I know...
We have a plan. We have a plan to replace it.
I have a question, though.
Yeah. I just, I'd like to make sure that you acknowledge that we, I know you don't like plans, but you have to have them to get work done.
I do have plans.
We have, we have...
If you fail to plan, your plan to fail. But I, I still have a question, if you allow me the same courtesy to, you know, ask it. So my understanding, or just, just clarify to me, the sensors have been installed. So the sensors are installed to alert people if there's too much water in the pump house where it could, it could affect the electrical?
Right.
So if that's the case, okay, who's alerted? Does it have to come and pump out the pump house? Like, I don't under, I don't have clarity on it.
You have to, if you go down to the pump house and look, right? So the, the road is here, the pump house is obviously down lower than the road because that's where the water is. And then inside the pump house, the pumps are down further. So if you're on the road, you might not realize exactly how much water is in that pump house. But when it gets to a certain level, that's where the electrical panel is. And in this previous case, it was up at the roof, so it topped the electrical panel. So once it tops that panel, there's no power, and it can't run.
So the electrical box was pulled, and it was put back on prior to that last storm that we had. The box was pulled from the outside.
Down and repaired.
Has that been fully repaired?
Mm-hmm.
The electrical panels are about halfway up the, the wall, or about possibly eye level up the wall inside of the pump house?
I understand they're up at about eight feet.
Inside of the house at eight feet?
Right.
Have they been moved up since then, or just...
I don't think there's a lot of space to go up from there. The, the water touched the ceiling in, in there. It was actually in the lights in the ceiling.
Now, these two pieces, we have the 557,000, and we have the 2, 2 million. So the 500 is individual disaster assistance, and then the other one is disaster relief mitigation. Now, the pump house would fall in both of these categories, correct?
So, so it would fall, it wouldn't, the $500,000 wouldn't get us a new pump station. It could fall into the mitigation factor, but it's probably easier for us to buy it or spend, do this out of ARPA dollars. No matter what happens, if we decided today that we wanted a brand-new pump station, it still needs engineering and design. It just, it is a piece of this. So no matter what pot we fund it with, it would be far easier to do ARPA because we have an engineer under contract at this point who's beginning the design on that. So that would be the easier route for us to fund it in than the ARPA mitigation, or the mitigation pot.
And the funding should be there?
Well, we have the funding.
Correct.
Yeah. So just one more piece to add. So all of this needs to be permitted by DEP. So that's always a, a step in the, in the process.
Is there an estimate of how long it'll take for us to hear back from Pima?
The estimate to get, hear back from Pima?
Yeah, how long, like...
Everybody has to put in their, their final numbers by Thursday. So I'm not certain on the turnaround, but that's when we have to report by.
Yeah. I think they'll come back to us relatively quick. I would, it seems like in the next couple of weeks, we will know. So I think, I think it seems like in real time with this process before you all, that, that we should have, we should have a, an answer, or at least a, we should know the answer is no, if the answer is no, in the next couple of weeks. If the answer is yes, I think that might take a little bit longer. But, you know, obviously, we hope the answer is yes, but if it's going to be no, I'd rather us just know that and be able to plan this, plan this all out, the way that, with, with the, you know, the funds that we do have, or knowing that we need to figure out how to get more funds for it.
And just, just today, we submitted a letter of interest to Pima to, to say that we were interested in their acquisition and demolition, the buyout program. So it's, it's just the precursor. It's the first step to put, you know, put our foot in the door, but we're working to look at every avenue we can for funding.
Right. And we've talked to, we've talked to a lot of different people about what that could look like. The FEMA buyout process, the acquisition process can take a long time. So we're, we're trying to tease out what that could look like. Again, that's why these, these funds are flexible in case we would want to use, use them. We'd still have to follow HUD guidance. These are federal dollars. We still have to follow the federal rules. But if there's a way that, if, you know, if our, if some of our residents would like that program, those, that's one of the purposes of the meetings that we'll have with each household next week. If they would like to pursue that option, we want to be able to keep some level of flexibility. And again, set expectations for timing. Unfortunately, these are, you know, public dollars, and they don't tend to go quickly, but we want them to go as fast as we can make them go.
Now, the individuals that you're meeting with, are these people that are above the 50% damage?
Right.
So that's all, do you know how many you're meeting with?
Yeah. We have 14 properties that have sustained the substantial damage.
14 properties. I'm sure that we're going to get a lot of questions tonight from Kaiser Valley residents. We'll, council will compile them, and we could send them over to you?
Sure. We have code enforcement. So most, most every one of the property owners that's been impacted has been in touch with our code enforcement department, has had an inspection done through code enforcement, through NEIC. We've also contracted with Barry ISAT to get these inspections done. So, you know, everyone should have had multiple touchpoints with code enforcement. A code enforcement team made calls today to get, to get further information, and then the calls to set up the meetings will happen the next couple of days. So everyone should have multiple touchpoints with the city. Through our recovery events that we had, we had six of those events a couple of weeks back. We met a lot of those homeowners through the, the visits to the different neighborhoods between, you know, myself, between DPW and fire and code enforcement. You know, we've been in touch with, with, I'd say, most of the impacted residents throughout the city. Sure, people, of course, still have questions, and we don't have every single answer. But if, certainly if somebody hasn't gotten contacted, we, we want to know that to make sure that we've, we've got everybody covered. But we'll continue to gather the information we have. And again, those, starting with those 14 substantially damaged properties, next week, we'll be having individual meetings because, you know, every resident is, and every household has a different, you know, a different set of needs and probably different questions.
Back when we had flooding to this extent in the plot section of Scranton, I do think there was relaxed permits, condemnation process, things like that. Are we going to be working with these families through that?
Yeah. We're not charging any permit fees for any of the work that's, that's being done. I believe we're all caught up on all permits that, that have been requested. There are limitations with the National Flood Insurance Program. There are some permits that, that we need, and this is another reason for the meetings next week. There are some homes that we need to hold off on permits because if we're going to be applying for some of these programs and dollars, we can't be issuing them permits yet. But to the homes that we know are, are good to, to get permits and go along, we've, we've been turning those around very quickly, and we've not been charging any fees. So that, that's certainly not an additional burden that we want to have on anybody.
We also received a question about possible tax relief for those residents. Is that something that's being considered?
We certainly, we certainly can. Yeah, I've, I've thought about that, too. I think let's, let's, we, the real estate bills don't go out for many months, so I think that's a kind of a 2.0 that we, let's talk about that, you know, after, let's get through this, this first hurdle with where the funding's coming from. And I think during the budget time, that would be a good, a good time to discuss that.
Yeah, I certainly think that's another important, we're talking about burdens on those residents.
Yeah. Well, and especially, I mean... Well, and especially, I mean, obviously, anybody who's not in their homes. The, you know, paying, paying a mortgage on a home you're not occupying is, that's a, that is very unfortunate, and we don't want to be overburdening people any more than, than we have to. I also just, you know, the insurance pieces have been so frustrating in this process. So many claims have been denied, and it's, it's tough to see that on a, you know, it's happening in our own household, too, from this. The, the insurance pieces, you'd think would be slightly more generous given how much we all pay. So I think that the tax piece, the permit piece, anywhere we can offer relief, I think we should.
And I think if there's anything that we can do as a city to reduce those worries, considering there's, there's so much already on their plates, then I think that we should.
Yep.
Thank you.
I think my last statement would just be that I'll have the people over at Kaiser Valley Community Center reach out to you before...
I mean, they can reply all to the question I asked them, like, nine months ago or something?
I don't recall the last question. But I will have them reach out to you about the Kaiser Valley Community Center before those funds are reallocated.
Sure.
Does anyone else have any questions for the mayor or Desi or Eileen or anyone on the panel? If not, thank you very much for coming in. We appreciate that. We're going to take a three, four-minute break here to clear the table here and get the microphones back in place so we can begin our meeting. Thank you.